Welcome to the 2022 organizational meeting of the Parma City School District Board of Education. I'm Jack Kreis, I'm the President Pro temp. We will begin this evening with our four newly elected members receiving the oath of office. First to receive oath of office is Cynthia Bratz. She will be sworn in by, I'd like to invite Ohio District 15 State Representative Jeffrey Crossman, the Honorable Jeffrey Crossman, to forward and administer the oath of office to Mrs. Cindy Bratz.
I state your name.
I, Cynthia Bratz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties as a member.
Discharge my duties as a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Parma City School District.
Of the Parma City School District.
Kiawaha County, Ohio.
Kiawaha County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
Now I would like to invite Ohio District 23 State Senator, the Honorable Nikki Antonio, to come up and forward and administer the oath of office to Mrs. Amanda Carpus.
This is an incredible honor. Okay. Read after me. I, state your name.
I, Amanda Carpus.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and.
The Constitution of the United States and.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio and that I will.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio and that I will.
Faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education of the.
As a member of the Board of Education of the.
Parma City School District, Kiawaha County.
Parma City School District, Kiawaha County.
In Ohio.
In Ohio.
To the best of my ability and.
To the best of my ability and.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
We now invite the City of Seven Hills Mayor, the Honorable Tony Biaseo- Biaseoda? Hope I did that right, Tony. To come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Mark Ruda.
I, state your name.
I, Mark Ruda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Parma City School District.
Of the Parma City School District.
Kiawaha County.
Kiawaha County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
We now invite Parma City Council President, the Honorable Sean Brennan, to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Stephen Vaughn.
It's an honor that you asked.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank all of you for your service.
Thank you.
School Board members, a tough job. And it's an honor that you're willing to do that for us. I, Stephen Vaughn.
I, Stephen Vaughn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Oh, faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education of the Parma City School District.
As a member of the Board of Education of the Parma City School District.
Kiawaha County.
Kiawaha County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
I'd like all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Reading of the Special Meeting Notice. Unless there is an objection, we will dispense with the reading of the Special Meeting Notice. Resolution 22, 2022 Board Organization Nomination and Election of President. In accordance with Section 3313.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Election, the Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members for a term of one year. I would like to open the floor for nominations for the Office of 2022 President of the Parma City School District Board of Education.
Mr. President Pro temp, I would like to nominate Mr. Stephen Vaughn for President.
Second. There's been a nomination and a second for Stephen Vaughn to be President. Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, I will move to close the nominations.
Second.
Roll call to close the nominations, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Roll call to elect the 2022 Parma City School District President of the Board of Education. Please, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Mr. Vaughn.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Well, John's got one nick on me.
Stephen Vaughn has been elected 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education President. Mr. Nucio, will you administer the President's oath of office to Mr. Vaughn?
Do it again.
I, Stephen Vaughn.
I, Stephen Vaughn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Oh, faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As President of the Board of Education.
As President of the Board of Education.
Of the Parma City School District, Kiawaha County, Ohio.
Of the Parma City School District, Kiawaha County, Ohio. Kiawaha County, Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And in accordance.
And in accordance.
With the laws now in effect.
With the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
And will be.
All right. I move the nomination to the election of the Vice President. In accordance with Section 3313-14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members Vice President for the term of one year. I would like to open the floor to nominations of the Office of the 2022 Vice President for the Parma City School District Board of Education.
Mr. Vaughn, I would like to nominate Amanda Carpus for Vice President of the Parma City Schools Board of Education.
Any other nominations? Mr. Nucio?
Need a second.
Need a second then, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ruda, you second?
I second.
Okay, roll close, close nominations, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Roll call to elect the 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Vice President.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Through the election there, this Amanda Carpus has been elected as 19, or 19. Jeez, oh man. 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Vice President. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Nucio will now administer the oath of office.
Man, John's got one up on both of you tonight.
Who wrote the 19 on here?
Amanda Carpus. I, Amanda Carpus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
My duties as Vice President of the Board of Education.
My duties as Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Parma City School District, Kiawaha County, Ohio.
Of the Parma City School District, Kiawaha County, Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
And now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Is now the appropriate time for any kind of speeches?
Yes.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and give a little quick brief speech, which I guarantee be shorter than John Schweitzer's. Okay, as I reflect on my last four years of working on this school board, I am very proud of the work our team had accomplished. I am deeply honored to have been elected for a second term and equally honored to have the confidence of other board members to take on the leadership role as President. I welcome Mr. Mark Ruda to the Board. I am looking forward to hearing his perspectives and his ideas. My vision for the Parma City School District may be childlike ideology and it has never really wavered in the four years I've been working on the board. However, it is what I wanted to do is work as a community. During the 31 years that I've lived in Parma, I have developed a sense of what each community represents and that there is a separation of the three communities. Each community is important as they make up the Parma City School District identity. The Parma City School District was once a crown jewel of the education in this area. I've known several educators from around the state that saw oppositions as it was a system full of innovation unparalleled in education and community support. There remains my desire to bring these three communities together to develop a plan to move our system forward, to once again make Parma City School District a crown jewel. To retain the trust of the community, the trust as regained during this time, be respectful to all parties, community members and staff alike, to continue to be physically responsible by making decisions that most benefit the students. I am looking forward to continuing to move the district forward working with Dr. Smylek and his team. I guarantee that I will do everything in my power to provide our students with the tools to be successful and that I will always do what is right for the students. I would like to say thank you to the following people as they are very important in my decision process to run again. First and foremost, my wife, Mary, who can't be here tonight.
She's got you.
Yeah, no, she does. My rock. Excuse me. Yeah, my sounding board. The team of John Schweitzer, Amanda, Cindy and Jack. All thanks for your push for me to run again. Council President Sean Brennan for swearing me in again today and also guiding me through the electoral processes. My friends who are in attendance, Michael and Jen Dugler. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, I'm honored.
Thank you. Mark, do you want to go next? You want to go next? Do you want to thank anybody or?
Well, okay. I wasn't prepared for this. I just want to, you know, thank everybody that's supported me and my fiance, my kids and my family for, you know, supporting me in doing this. I know it wasn't easy on them this past summer going through all this stuff and I really want to just say thank you to them and anybody that's supported me and I don't take this responsibility lightly. I know, I know what this means. I know how important education is to, you know, our children and getting this right is the most important job that we have as elected members. So, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and I'll do my best.
First of all, I thank to State Representative Jeff Crossman for coming to swear me in tonight. I know he came from Columbus and that was a feat to get here in time to do this. I very much appreciate it, Jeff. It's a great honor to have you come and do this. You've been a fierce advocate for public education and it is so greatly appreciated by all of us, I'm sure. You've done it a lot and have been visible in our communities supporting Parma City School District, so thank you very much for that. Thanks to all of the community members and all of their support, people across the district that supported my reelection to Board. I am most grateful for the confidence that you have placed in me to continue in doing this job. I am 100% devoted to working hard every day to do the best I can to work towards the greatest opportunities for our students and their education here in Parma schools so that they are well-prepared when they leave us. And times are always challenging for public education, so we appreciate the support of the many people that do stand behind us and including all of the others that came to swear us in this evening because I know all of you are advocates for public education here in Parma. So, thank you all. Thank you certainly to my family, my husband Lloyd, not just for support tonight, but for decades of putting up with me in schools. And two of our children are able to be here this evening. Our son Troy, his wife Margaret, and our two granddaughters that are here, Cosette and Clementine. Thank you, girls, for being here. And also, our daughter Hallie is here this evening, so thank you all for your support and for coming to be here tonight. So, I look forward to working together with the Board and a great collaborative effort to do the best we can for Parma schools and the very serious responsibility that we have and the important charge that we have to educate and care for students to the best of our ability.
I would first like to thank Senator Antonio for accepting the invitation to swear me in. It is much appreciated beyond words. We have a wonderful group of elected officials in this room who, every day, no matter who's watching, fight for public education. And we actually have a couple more, Mr. Kusmals in the audience, Mayor Gallo from Parma Heights. I don't know if I missed anybody else, but thank you for everything that you guys do, truly. Thank you to my husband, who picked up more than his fair share of the parenting duties over the last, we'll call it five and a half years since the first time I decided to run. He has been a saint in more than one way. My kiddos, four of them are here tonight, Guinevere, Scarlett, Frankie and Haley, my sister Shannon, my dad Joe, and my mom Debbie and my stepdad Harry. Thank you guys for everything. Oh, my sister Bridgette has made it too. And I'm going to give a shout out because this young lady back there is working full-time and in law school and she's incredible. So, I love you. Public service is a privilege and I am humbled beyond measure for the trust the communities have placed in me. When I was sworn in four years ago, I wasn't sure there could have been a greater honor. The mere fact that the overwhelming majority of the residents who voted in Parma Heights, Parma and Seven Hills have stood with me as I have defended public education, used my voice to amplify those voices who have been muffled or whose worth has been previously measured by imposition, but most importantly, as I have advocated for students in every way possible. Tonight a page turns and I am grateful for the opportunity to have added a new voice to our table with the addition of Mr. Ruda to the Board. Mark, I'm hopeful with your presence, we can continue to move the needle of progress forward. To Jack and Cindy, I am humbled to continue my work serving with you. Same with Charlie and Sean. And Steve, my Jedi mind tricks are ready. I have said this many times, but it bears worth repeating. We honor the uniqueness of each individual and embrace diverse backgrounds, values and points of view to build a strong, inclusive community and prepare our students to live in a multicultural society. I continue to do that every day and I promise to continue to do that every day. Thank you.
Is that everybody?
That is everybody, unless Jack, you know, you just want to say something.
Well, I'm very honored and proud to be a member of this Board. I've been a member for the past two and a half years, now two and a quarter years, whatever. And, but I really am proud to be part of it and proud to move the needle forward to continue education. I graduated from this fine institution here back in 1975 and I'm still very active in the community and I enjoy being part of this Board. Thank you.
All right. Any adoption amendments or walk-on items?
No.
Skip that now. So... Invitation for public comments concerning agenda items to be adopted this evening. At this time, we invite guests to the, do we have any?
Do not.
I will skip that then. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-02, Approval of the 22, 2022 Organizational Items Under Consent Action. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-02, Approval of the following organizational items under action, which are: Establishing place and time for regular Board meetings for 2022. In accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code, Board of Education shall fix the time and dates holding its monthly meetings. Acceptance of the 2022 Schedule for Work Session Meeting Dates. Acceptance of 2022 Schedule of Committee Meetings. Approval of Membership of the Ohio School Boards Association 2022. Approval of Travel Related to Official Duties While Serving OSBA. Approval of Membership of the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund for 2022. Providing for Employment of Legal Counsel for the Board of Education. Establishing Board of Education Service Fund for 2022. Dispensing with separate resolutions approving checks. Acceptance of Treasurer's Bond. Authorizing Treasurer to file real estate complaints. Authorizing the Treasurer CFO to sign and/or certify third-party contracts as fiscal agent for non-public schools. Establish blanket purchase orders not to see the amount. I think it's like $3,000. Affirmation of Policy Manual. Authorization for Submission of Grants and Funding Programs. Authorizing Selected Student Activity Program Contracts. Authorizing the Superintendent to Establish Class Fees, Student Fees and Other Appropriate Fees. Appointment of a Hearing Officer. Appointment of a Compliance Officers. Authorizing Non-Salary Remuneration of Employees. Establishing Travel and Reimbursement Rates. Approval of certificat- certi- certificat- certificate, excuse me. Holy moly. Approval of Certificated Substitute Pay Rates effective January 1st, 2022. Authorization to Establish Hourly Rate for Home Instruction Tutors. Approval of Salary Schedule for Classified Substitute Employees. Approval to Accept Exemption of Any Employee of the Parma City School District. Approval of a Contract with Emory U.S. Services to Provide Direction and Assistance with the Administration of Unemployment Compensation Claims and Related Issues. Providing and Retain Architectural, Engineering and Environmental Consulting Firms for the Parma Board of Education. Authorization for Superintendent Designee to Advertise For Bids pursuant to Section 3313.46 of the Revised Code. Resolution authorizing the Acceptance of Donations. A Resolution to Designate the Treasurer CFO as a Designee of the Parma City School District Board of Education to Attend the Required Public Recording Training as mandated by state law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-02. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
Nothing like trial by fire with the longest resolution ever for your first act.
Holy moly's. Any comments, questions? Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
We, Resolution 2022-01-02 has been approved. My glasses keep falling off. So, Board Members, we need to select our 2022 Superintendent Committee Assignments. I believe the following assignments are correct. For Businesses, Mr. Mark Ruda and Cindy Bratz. Curriculum, Cindy Bratz and Steve Vaughn. Finances, Jack Kreis and Steve Vaughn. Policies, Amanda Carpus and Mark Ruda. Any objections? Okay, so that would be what we do now. Information to the Board, Dr. Smylek.
Sure, there's a couple items I'd like to comment on. First, the media certainly picked up the news about the Redmond. I want to make very clear, we certainly didn't mean that to be some type of dramatic announcement. Cleveland.com contacted us over break and wanted some comments about where we stood with the Redmond. I answered the questions honestly. We had done what I would estimate to be a pretty thorough process since the summer of 2020. If you remember, after the murder of George Floyd, we had a number of letters come in to our Board of Education asking us to reconsider the Parma Senior High mascot. Mr. Schweitzer. Mr. Schweitzer, at the time, asked me to convene a process. We had four Zoom meetings that were open to anyone in the community who wanted to speak. We also had an online survey to which 2,100 people responded, which is by far the most responses we've ever had for any survey of any type. We also always meant to talk to students, to be... hear their voices and make them part of the process. We did not do that last year because of our sort of navigating the COVID labyrinth that we like to call it and getting through all of those obstacles. This year, however, we were able to get to talk to students. I always kind of viewed students as sort of a tie-breaking voice. Our community meetings had clearly advocated for the change of the Redmond logo. Our survey clearly advocated for the retention of the Redmond logo. So, students were sort of that third leg of the triangle. Students were very clearly in favor of retaining the Redmond logo. Very passionate, very informed, came to the meetings knowing why they were there. I laid out pros and cons for them and gave them, you know, some research to read before we actually had somewhat of a discussion about the item. But it was very clear that their consensus was to remain. That being said, I can't in good conscience recommend that our committee is behind a change, or our community, I should say. As I explained several times in different interviews, ultimately, there's not one person that owns the Parma City Schools. The Board of Education doesn't even own the Parma City Schools. We belong to the community, and we have a responsibility to consider their input. And especially on such emotional issues such as this, make that a strong consideration. So, I thank you for allowing us to proceed with that process. Again, I never meant that to be a specific announcement. Certainly, it is always something that can evolve and something that can change, but at this point, it is not a recommendation that I felt comfortable making to say our community was behind a change. Anybody want to comment or question? I have a second item, too, I'd like to...
Anyone have comments on that? I appreciate your forthcoming on that. And I'm sure that was a difficult interview, let alone topic. And I'd like the answer that you gave. And, you know, I think we have to just go with that.
Thank you. Second, and this is really for the entire community, we begin again a conversation about what our footprint into the district or into the future should look like in terms of our district facilities. We invite community participation in that process. We are aiming to really go through a three-pronged process. Our first is to educate. So, we've got meetings coming up next week to educate about our district finances, our enrollment trends. The Board of Education, we'll get a sneak preview of that. I always want to make sure our Board of Education has all of the information that we would certainly talk about publicly. So, that will be in a work session on Monday, and we'll work through the same activities and the same information that the community will start to see on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. All of the content of those meetings is consistent. We just wanted to make three different times of the meetings. So, we have 1:00, 4:00, and 7:00 meetings on those dates. And we invite participation. We, again, anyone in this room could stand here with a piece of paper and say, "Here's the plan, and let's go with this." And we all know that we have opinions and ideas of what the future of our district's facilities should look like. But we are committed to building a plan that we hope can get community consensus. And all of our participation is very important in that process. If you belong, if you live in this district, we want you to participate. We need your participation, and we need your leadership. So, again, it's a three-pronged process. Educate, the second piece will be planning. And the third part will be inspiring because we know we have to do more and better work to inspire our community to fund new schools. This round, we are up to 37% of matching funds from the State of Ohio, which is very significant. We want to be able to take advantage of that, but that takes inspiration beyond what we've been able to accomplish to this point. So, I look forward to presenting our work to the Board on Monday night and having your questions and your ideas and your participation be part of that process. Obviously, you will hold the final say on what any type of bond issue would look like or any type of scenario that we would be advancing. But I also look forward to our community participating.
When do you remind me? I might have missed it, but I think you... I know we're starting on January 10th with our work session.
Correct, so go ahead, sir.
Are the public sessions shortly after that?
They're the next day, actually.
The next day or the next hour?
Yeah. No, so Monday, the 10th, is the work session?
Right.
And then Tuesday, the 11th, Wednesday, the 12th, Thursday, the 13th are the meetings. So, we can talk Monday, too. You know, the Board's certainly invited to participate in those community meetings as well. But you'll... It's, you know, the same information. There won't be new information coming out to the community that the Board hasn't seen.
What time on Monday?
Monday is 4:30? 4:15?
4:15, yeah.
Monday is 4:15. And finally, before I yield back the floor, I really want to congratulate all four Board members that won popular election. Winning an election that's competitive, and this one certainly was. Takes a lot of fortitude, takes a lot of resilience, takes vision, takes courage, and takes the ability to step away from your family at times. And I know there's a lot of family members in here, and we're grateful for your patience and grace during that process. But you are public servants now. You won an important election, and I look forward to serving you because the public has said you are the people that we trust to represent us in voting on all of these different resolutions and making all of these hard decisions. And I respect that. And I respect your role, and I respect that I serve you, and I serve at your pleasure. And I look forward to doing so throughout these next several years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smylek. I do like the... Glad that we're jumping back on to trying to move our district forward and, you know, trying to come up maybe some kind of consensus on what we should do with our school buildings. And, you know, and what's going to happen with them. And I look forward to the public coming in and saying, "This is our idea." I mean, I think we had that opportunity last time. It just seemed to be the same five people I would see every meeting, so... But, yeah, so please, 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 please come to the meetings and offer your ideas and suggestions.
We actually have 80 residents signed up right now, and that's...
That's outstanding.
I think 19 staff members, 61 community members. So, that's great. But we know that, you know, 80 is a very small percentage of our population, but we also know that 80 is a good base of folks to be out in neighborhoods and, you know, at block parties and talking to folks about whatever it is we hope we can mobilize behind. So, we would love to get more, 100, 120, but at this point, 80 is a solid start.
Yeah, that's very good, very good. Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Carpus, communications?
I have no communications. Dr. Smylek hit all the nails on the head, so we're good.
All right.
Mr. Nucio, my turn.
Mr. Nucio?
Do you not have anything?
You have nothing?
Nothing.
Oh, my goodness.
All right. This brings us to finance, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-01-03, Adoption of the Tax Budget for the Fiscal Year 2023.
We have... Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-03. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2022-01-03 has been approved. Unless another member of the Board has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Appreciate the answer. Any information requested by Board members? Nothing? Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-04 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-04. Roll call, please, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, motion approved, thank you. Thanks for coming.